Oh yeah, what's going on everybody? A Super Dave back at it again with the PA Political Revolution Podcast. And we're back again to give you some more updates on what's going on in this treacherous ass city that's named Port Arthur, Texas, right? The real Trillville, the home of the Trill, right? Home of the fighting fiends, like they used to say back in the day. So, um, today is gonna be another good one, man. We're gonna show you how crazy council is and how, and how treasonous they are to the actual citizens. And today, we're gonna be talking about, let's go ahead and check this agenda, right? Resolution authorizing the Port Arthur Economic Development Corporation to utilize pre-employment workforce training funds to implement a youth employment program in the amount of ninety-six thousand dollars. Funds available in the Port Arthur EDC. Let's go ahead and get into this debauchery.
Item number two.
Oh, and I'm just, this is my first time checking it out, right? Um, my first time checking it out, so it's gonna be like a reaction video.
Uh, PR number twenty-four-two-twenty-nine. It is a resolution authorizing the Port Arthur Economic Development Corporation to utilize pre-employment workforce training funds to implement a youth employment program in an amount not to exceed ninety-six thousand dollars. Funds available in P A E D C account number one-twenty-eight-zero-six-two-five-fifty-four-forty-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero. Might get a motion for approval, Councilman Lewis.
Motion for approval.
Might get a second, Councilman Becker.
Second.
Has been moved to second and we would approve PR number twenty-four-two-twenty-nine as approved. Uh, we read it for question. Councilman Doocy.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Stokes, uh, I know we, I know you have funds for pre- pre-employment workforce training funds, okay? But the problem that I kind of got confused on, I need you to clarify. When I started reading what this is about, is you're talking about a youth employment program. And when you talks about it, and I read all of that you say, you're talking about high school graduate and high school senior. You talk about CTE. That's high school. And then when I read what you were basing it on, you had as reference for that local government code five-oh-one-point-one-six-three, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, did you read five-oh-one-point-one-six-three?
I have it in front of me, sir.
Okay. You read B-one-two and C?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so do you think as says, you can put money on youths or seniors? And in fact, I, at the meeting last night, you were talking about even the middle school, but I'm gonna say that anything in here even remotely talks about educational institutions and, and students?
Okay, uh, thank you, sir, and good evening, uh, City Council. Just to be, uh, make sure that I was understanding this correctly, I, uh, this morning sought, uh, again from the P A D C's attorney, uh, you all know attorney, Charles Zech, uh, to make sure that I was understanding what jurisdiction, what approvals we had. And once again, he repeated, and I certainly, I have copies of this, you can, I can provide it to you, that the governing code for our program, which is in its ninth year, uh, by the way, uh, the third year for under his, uh, tutelage in terms of when they've had the legal contract, is five-oh-one-point-one-six-three. Uh, I can certainly read all of that citation to you, uh, but I have no reason to go against, uh, or think against the advice that we have received from our council in terms of the governing, uh, code for this particular program, which like I mentioned, is in its ninth year, uh, has been approved by this council for those nine years and three of those years, uh, associated with Attorney Zech.
Mrs., Mrs. Stokes, don't say, you saying it's been approved by this council for nine years. You talking about the the employment training, okay? I sat on the, I sat on the EDC board, okay, during all of this training, and I know about the training that they provide, okay? It's two type training that is covered in one-oh, uh, five-oh-one-one-point-three. The training in A-one, I mean, B-one, it says, "A corporation may spend revenue received under this subtitle for job training that consists of one, providing job-related life skills sufficient to enable an unemployed individual to obtain employment." I remember when the EDC was doing the life skills. It was for people who was unemployed. And they were giving them, and they paid a contractor to teach the life skills because that was acceptable under five-oh-one-one-sixty-three, okay? Number two says, are you following me? Okay, number two says, "Providing job-training skills sufficient to enable an unemployed individual to obtain employment." How's a student gonna go through training and obtain employment in a in school? This is something that we have done with the EDC.
Councilman Doocy, I, I have to, I have to just ask you something, of course, and I'll-
Now, now this is, now this is what you have, counsel. You have a corrupt-ass council. See, that the problem is, you have all of these damn lying-ass fucking Negroes from the school district, right? You have all these crooks from the school district. Now, after they done raised your water rate, talking about how much money they don't have, right? But now these damn thief-ass Negroes trying to go ahead and give your money to the school district. You have the EDC guy, he lying and said he had a program for, uh, for nine years. That, that's, that's false. If you would've had the program for nine years, it would've been in the budget, right? But it's not in the budget. That's why you trying to take it from the adult training program, right? And you trying to put it with the kid stuff, right? And I'm gonna show you how that's discriminatory right there. Later on after this, I'm gonna show you how that, how that motto has been used before and it's been discriminatory, right? You have a group of old Negroes, right? Old sell-out Negroes. Now, I'm done saying about just to say, oh, well, I, you have some young ones. They have the young ones that sell them out too, the school district. You have some on the board. You have some old sell-out house Negroes on the board too, right? You have them wanting to take the money out of job, out of job-training adults and, and launder that, in my opinion, to the kids. Everything I'm saying is my goddamn opinion, whatever, right? Laundered to the kids. And let's see how, what the hell, what Live Boy T gonna come up and about to say right now.
You could, I could be following you. Read that second, that second thing you just read again.
Okay, the second one says, "Providing job-training skills sufficient to enable an employed indivi-, an unemployed individual to obtain employment."
Okay, now, it didn't say the age of the unemployed individual. Neither did it stipulate the educational-
Well, they didn't say the age or the thing, but technically, right, if you're in school, you're actually a juvenile, right? You're, you're, you're an actual juvenile. So, you know, it's already understood that, that here, this is for people that's going to jobs, but you have these crooked-ass attorneys, right? You got these crooked-ass attorneys that's in the city, on the city council, uh, you know, council, goddamn EDC, all these doggone crooked-ass attorneys, right? They wanna lie to you about the law, interpret the law, have some type of bullcrap with the law, right? So that's why you always gotta watch out in politics. You have these crooked attorneys, whether they be on council, whether they be with a certain department or whatnot, you have to watch out. A lot of them gonna try to use that, that, that broken knowledge that they have, right? Or probably not even adequate knowledge of, uh, of so-called legal, of, of questionable legal knowledge to try to bullcrap some type of lie, right? The, the judges make up anything nowadays. So, you know, obviously, they probably have talked about this, right? Because Barti is nowhere near that smart enough to catch something like that on the fly and try to put it right there. So, they've been kind of, well, they even actually talked, I believe they actually talked about this before. That's what they normally do. That's the school district, right? All of these damn sellouts, you got Ken Law, you got, uh, Frank, you got Barti, all of them up there from the school district. So, they gonna try to find a way, raise your taxes for the city, but try to funnel money through the school district, right?
Status of the unemployed individual. So, a stu-, no, 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 wait a minute. So, if you said-
No, point of order, point of order. And when I finish, you can, you can speak anytime you want. Don't interrupt me though.
Okay.
Okay. Once again, as students, the other thing that I would like for us, for you to check on, is that the EDC, the Texas Economic Development Council clear opposes economic development corporations getting involved with agreements and, and dealings with educational institute, high schools and also uh, colleges or whatever, okay? But if you read, C, C says, "A corporation to which the section applies may contract with any person to provide the job training authorized under this chapter." That's how we got to get Lamar University, I mean Lamar State College to do, uh, the bus, the license, okay? We could do the nursing program, any skill that is in demand, the corporation can seek.
So, so understand, right, they're taking money from the EDC, where the EDC funds these programs, like the CDL, the, uh, what Lamar State College pulled up with the CDL stuff, CDL program. And I just think I seen, uh, Mr. Stafford, he put something on there with some, something on social media with, um, with ironworkers, if I'm not mistaken, right? Ironworkers are, some, something that got a construction industry, right? So, you're taking from these programs that's actively putting people to work, and you wanna send it over there to the school district. So, you know, when the school district gets the money, you don't have no control over what's going on, what it's gonna do, whatever they gonna do, right?
People do welding, okay? But I have a serious concern when the type-A economic development corporation start taking money to provide dry job-training or life skills and diverting it toward schools. Especially when you're talking about CTE. CTE is, is the, the skills that they provide in high school, okay? Once they leave high school, if they want to get training, all they have to do is come to the EDC. If they graduate and say, hey, y'all got any training? Or I've had this type of training, I'd like to have more training. Can I get enrolled? Sure. But the way I read all of this information and the background, you dealing with high school here and students. And that's not what a type-A corporation is set up to do or design. Now, you say your attorney did it. I'm gonna tell you right now, uh, I sat on the program, and you talking nine years. That statement, you gotta be careful. I've been on EDC. We've never done nothing with students like what you have outlined in the background, okay? That program, that youth employment program, you say we've been doing for now, you know you haven't. You've been doing pre-employment training. That's what the EDC has been done. This thing working with high school? That's not, that's why you asking us to let you transfer money from the pre-employment training fund to establish money for this training.
See, you have these dogs up here, right? You have these lying dogs. You have these EDC directors lying. See, that's why they, they wanted to get rid of Mr. Baptiste, right? Rest his soul. They wanted to get rid of him because he was a more of, 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 a steward, a better steward of your money, right? He was the one that wanted to make sure the, the finances go to the right places. But you gave this clown over here an inflated, an inflated salary. You gave this new EDC director an inflated salary, doesn't have a clue what he's doing, and he just following the doggone advice of these dummies up here, right? He involved, he's following the advice of Barti, Frank, Ken Law, right? And whoever, whatever dummy that goes along with them, right? So, they're wanting to use the employment money that you need, that you, all the people that got the CDL license from Lamar State College, Port Arthur. They're trying to take this away, right? Just imagine if they would've taken this money before you would've been involved in it, right? Or any of the city training, the employment training that you see, I, I, for some reason, I knew this was some bullcrap. I knew something, it was strange because the EDC didn't want, doesn't, really doesn't want to train people, right? They had an issue with trying to work with the refiners to train it, but when I seen they gave Lamar some money, right? I'm like, okay, this is, this is different. That's what they're supposed to do, right? So, after they had a recent news deal about giving them some money for training, now they wanna go ahead and backdoor and take away the money, right? So, they, they wanna get you with the flash, like they've given money to Lamar, but hell, they look like they may try to take it or stop it from now, right? So, after they did have a news thing about giving Mr. Stafford and, and, and Lamar and his department over some money for training, now they wanna remove all of that. So, man, it's a dirty game with these politicians, right? This is, is consistently deceptive and lying to the people, right? They're constantly lying to you. So, man, look, you have to understand, you know, you know, I talk to people, they try to say you can try to vote it out. You can't. You wanna do voting, right? You wanna do, continue to vote, but you need to agitate these lazy-ass crooked law enforcement people, right? The DA's office, the Texas Rangers office, the FBI, right? And other federal state, other organizations out there that deal with, you know, law enforcement, the Department of Justice, whoever, man. We have to consistently keep pounding these people until something, you know, gets done down here, right? So, you know, we have to, that's the only way it's gonna get done, right? Because even if you vote a good person in, they have the ability to be corrupted, right? And the only really true way is to really stop this. You're gonna need law enforcement intervention with these corruption, with this misappropriation of finances. All of this, you need to have legal, you know, that's the ideal, to have law enforcement go ahead and, and kind of, you know, go ahead and take a, take a stab at it, right? But you know, but on the foundations, we need a new city manager. And look, man, you have to get rid of these crooked pastor council members, man. That's, that's what you have to understand. But all of you out there conflate going to church with politics, man, it's not really supposed to mix. But unfortunately, a lot of you people elect these people, right? If you elect them and you see they're not doing a good job, don't reelect them again. Move them out. The first time, yeah, but after a person shows you who they are, you need to go ahead and remove them. Now, you had this clown, Barti, that went on three trips in the last month. More cheating and went to trips three times, and he's about to leave. So, this is a blatant disrespect of your tax dollars, people. You need to be out there watching these crooks on your behind. You need to be on their behind because they're just draining the money. They done raised your water rates with seven percent higher. I mean, they wanna do it ten percent, but here they saying, hey, let's take money out of the economics and send it over here to some kids. Now, the kids, they don't really have, they, they don't really know what they wanna do yet half the time. You don't really know where you wanna work for the next thirty or forty years, coming right after high school. Things may change, so that money is better used for the adults. And something I seen on, just today on the P A S D's website, they had CTE training. Looked like some young white Hispanic guys was, you know, getting training in welding. So, they had a video of them, and they had one of the guys, right, was talking about that he wants to work with his brother as an electrician. So, most of the time, the people that's gonna, the, the, the youth that's gonna go into construction or whatnot, or those labor-type crafters, or they, they know somebody or they have somebody in their family member that's doing that and doing well. So, right? If you wanna get the youth involved into it, you have to first hire the parents of it, right? Just how most people know anything about the refinery and going with all these oil and doing all this weird type of work with the refiners that you don't never really hear of until, you know, you out of it, right? You need to have your parents employed, right, in these situations. That's when they can give the youth the best way to get into it, right? Hell, even if the youth just get trained and they say they wanna go to a job, right? You know, you may have people that work over there that wanna play them out their position, right? For instance, safe answer, right, you working at a refinery, you a process operator. And you know, you sitting down, right? You know, you a young kid over there, you sitting down, you may have like some senior people, they want, they little kinfolk in. So, you over there not related to somebody, but you have an operator that have his or her son or daughter over there, right? You know, the, the, the kid that doesn't have any people over there, they may be waiting for somebody to tell them what to do, to go ahead and trace lines or to go ahead and follow a person, while you have the person that's working over there, their son or daughter over there, they'll, they'll, they'll give them more of an inside scoop on what to do. And if they only had to hire one, and if it was out of a person's family member over there in the plant, or this other kid with no connections, you know, they're gonna pick the family member. And a lot of times, they'll try to screw the person with no connections out of their spot by letting them sit down. Or see if they sitting down in the break room or something, you know, they, they don't know what's going on, right? They're new there. So, you know, they're waiting on somebody to tell them. But the person with the family connections over there, they're gonna say, hey, this guy has some initiative. He coming out, me walking, tracing the lines, walking, doing, checking the pressure relief valves. He over here walking, doing a normal routine stuff that you checking, you know, relief valves, you checking certain tags on the, on the valves or whatnot. So, you know, the people with the family members in there, they're gonna have that advantage. And heck, you know, they're gonna profile this other guy that doesn't have any connections, nobody to tell him anything. Hey, he's just lazy. So, the point of me saying all of this, right? You need to have the parents in the jobs, and that's, that has a better influence of getting the kids and the youth in the job, right? Instead of taking money from the adults and bringing it to just the youth where they don't even know if they wanna do that type of work or not, or they have, or don't have this much information about it. Let's go ahead on again. I get to my diatribe a little bit later, but let's go ahead and get in, back in.
Don't stand and tell me, sir, that you've been doing it for nine years. That's not the case. That is not the case. And if you did, you'd have the money for it, okay? So, you wanna transfer money from what you got for job-training, and you wanna employ it with the high school. You know, uh, city attorney, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that you also check on our behalf because I, I'm not in favor until we get a thing, because that's what we do over here. We oversee that corporation when it come to finding following five-oh-four and five-oh-one. They're written, you know?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we always talk about this.
And you did a great job reading the statute. So, I would, I would, I would state that the funds are allowable for type-A, legally allowable.
Okay.
Uh, provided that they're providing the job-training skills. And it's an unemployed individual, and it's to provide them, uh, job-training for the future. It never ever did specifically address the age, as long as it was an unemployed individual. If you have policy to-
Yeah, yeah, you, you see, you know, when Barti brought it up, that these fools talked about it. So, that's the issue. You see, no, Barti ain't thinking about, Barti don't have the goddamn brainpower to think of this stuff up first. You know, they tell him, he's like a puppet. They tell him he regurgitates. So, that's what the same thing, the city attorneys coming on, they trying to go on the age of, so yeah, they talked about this.
Is that you don't wanna spend the money towards that. That's different. But legally, it looks like it's allowable.
Okay, okay, what I'll do is, that's not a problem. I, I could check on it. I could bring you the-
Okay, hold on, hold on, Councilman Doocy. No, sir, no, sir, wait a minute.
Now, you have this clown wanna interrupt them.
A minute. Now, you, you, I didn't, I didn't recognize, just a minute. No, just a minute. Now, I'm up to the chair of the meeting. No, wait, but you, you wanna call a part of all of me when I'm talking. You decided, you didn't ask me to ask me to let her talk. You just were talking to her. She-
Now, you have this fool here, right, trying to recognize that he, he has the issue with trying to recognize the city attorney. Man, him and the city attorney some both some damn clowns.
And to talk. So, now I'm just gonna get ready to correct you, 'cause now she got the floor because I did not deny her that. That don't mean that it comes right back to you. Okay, I have to recognize you. There are some other lights on. We've time as well spent. I gotta get to the other people. I gotta be fair. No, I got to be fair, Councilman Doocy. Okay, Councilman Becker, go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, we're, uh, unique in the city of Port Arthur, as everyone knows, that we have multiple school districts uh, within the borders of our city. But I wanna be sure that we're not leaving out a very large population of students, and that's our homeschool population. So, I want to give you some contact information for the oldest and the largest homeschool co-op that's actually here in Port Arthur. It's located in District Three. Uh, they are at Ridgewood Church, and they're called Lighthouse Homeschool Support.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
They're located at twenty-nine-twenty Lake Arthur Drive, and their phone number is four-oh-nine-seven-two-nine-six-thousand. Now, there's kids in that co-op program from all over southeast Texas, but there's a number of students in, that, that reside in Port Arthur that participate in that co-op. So, I wanna be sure that we're reaching out to, to that homeschool co-op because they can plug you into other co-ops around the area uh, that are servicing Port Arthur residents.
Now, Liz goddamn Becker wanna goddamn bring her, her doggone church or whatever, this other church, this home co-op, this school. You can't really have it both ways, right? You wanna get out of the school system, but you wanna have the money from the school system, right? So, this is kind of like some type of, in my opinion, some impromptu charter-type situation she trying to get over here, right? So, you know, and it's just with District Three, right? What about the others outside District Three? So, you know, if it's for District Three, she going with it, but you know, it did, but actually, this program is gonna go to some people outside of southeast Texas, right? So, she wanna take this money, but it's city, where they going to the, in school district, where that's wrong in the first place. But now she wanna bring it to some other, some other homeschool co-op, you don't even have no, wouldn't even have no program for this. You just wanna give them money, you don't even know if they gonna spend this crap or not. And, and that's way outside the goddamn bounds. Heck, it, it, it's just crazy. It's just crazy. These council members are straight retarded.
And we graduate kids from homeschool every semester. We've got a big group of probably over a hundred-
Well, if you're doing it for homeschool, man, why don't you get the home people to go ahead and put money towards the program you want to, man? This is not a charter school. So, you got a homeschool because you wanna, you don't wanna go through the confinements of a, of a public school. So, do, keep that same energy when it's time to train them, you know? Keep, keep your home, your, your own money. Do, do the homeschools get money from the state for that? I don't know. Maybe, maybe not. But you need to go through the homeschool parents, if it's a private, wherever they, however you do that crap. Y'all get the money for it.
Students are gonna graduate in May from the homeschool programs around the area. So, let's, let's not leave them out, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Hamilton.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to-
Thank you, mayor, I just want to, for the, uh, for the record, that the youth development program, youth employment, um, am I saying, I'm, I'm so tired.
Now she don't even know what the fuck she talking about.
Sorry, youth.
Or Y E P.
Y E P, the Y E P program has been in place since twenty nineteen. So this isn't a new program and I'm grateful for.
Now she goddamn lying too, right? Youth Employment Program is not, it's nothing E D C is doing. That's not diverting money from the E D C to bring it to the school district. Totally different thing. You have these motherfuckers lying to you, now I don't even see why in the hell she have a right to say anything, she don't even live here. This is how stupid and messed up this whole situation in Port Arthur is. You have a motherfucker over here trying to tell you what to do with city money, not even representing you, right? And she's, doesn't even live here.
This program, we've had several students who have excelled out of this program and I would hope that today we will continue that legacy and even improve on it and have it to grow year.
This is a new program, fool? She doesn't have a idea, none of them have a idea what they talking about. This is crazy, it's a new program.
Okay, Councilman Frank?
Yes, I want to thank you for bringing this item and I wanted to thank you for what you're doing, but I want to go a little bit farther than, uh, my colleague, Councilwoman Hamilton. I am a nineteen seventy-five graduate of Lincoln High School, uh, the first job.
Who cares, you voted to close down Lincoln Pastor?
That I ever had was working in the Port Arthur Youth Employment Program, uh, back in nineteen, it would have to be nineteen seventy-four.
So now Frank trying to get you to say that this shit been going on since nineteen seventy-four. First you heard Hamilton said it was going back to twenty nineteen, right? Okay, that's a lie, different program. Now you have Pastor, the, the Warlock, Warlock Frank, right? You, you have which Warlock Frank is saying now he went to nineteen seventy-four or some crap, right? They lying to you, people, I need you all as citizens to recognize when people are lying to you. E D C lied first, said it was going on for nine to ten years or whatever. Now Pastor Frank is saying or implying that it's been going on since nineteen seventy-four. They just lying to you in your face.
Uh, and I was working at the Rock Island Baptist Church, Mr. Arthur Guidry, who was a councilperson here, uh, in the city of Port Arthur. Um, I worked for him and I worked for the youth employment program then. So our city has a long tradition of employing the youth of Port Arthur, uh, to do work and to give training. So this is not anything new, this is something that has been done, uh, uh, a very, 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 very long time. So it is a, it is a founded tradition and I'm grateful that you are carrying that on, thank you.
Okay.
You have the E D C have training programs, you have the school have training programs. Each of them have their own separate money. Again, you got these, 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 um, broken up people from the school district, school ties coming over here, they messed up the school district, can't get no good education. They coming over here messing up things over here, right? So they trying to funnel this money to the school that they been wanting to do. I think they was, I think the city manager was even talking about a month ago, trying to pay, put money for the, uh, for one of them complexes they want to build, they trying to drain the money out of here. They already having a bond issue they trying to get. They have the bond issue, they get money for C T E, they have so much money. From what I understand, they have to give it back to the state, man, what the hell are you doing with all this money?
I'd like to speak on, on this matter as well. Now, the first, uh, point I'd like to say that, uh, am I correct? This program has been in existence for nine years, am I correct?
To my understanding, but you know what, just let me just correct.
Now you got Barti saying it's nine years, Frank saying it was the nineteen seventy-four. When obviously this isn't the case, right? They both of them lying to you, they just told you two different days, two different timeframe. This program has been in existence, right? They contradicted each other, they lying to you, people, in your face. And, and on the agenda is talking about moving money from the adult program to the schools' youth program, that's mixing money, man, that's, that don't happen like that, this is something new.
Let me just say this, I'm gonna just deal with my watch. In the first summer.
Now you got this W, he, he, look, he, he know that they just said two different, two different goddamn things, right? But they said it was for nine years, Frank said it's a seventy-four. Barti came back says nine, nine years, that's how stupid these son of a bitches are, man. This is how stupid these sellout, doggone niggas we got in Port Arthur are. Unfortunately, that they controlled by white folk now, believe that.
Twenty-seven students, couldn't have been working without the P A D C's Board of Directors approving the, the project and then sending it on to you for approval. Last summer, nineteen students, gainfully employed.
Summer program, kids' youth summer program is something different than what the school is doing. Again, the school, they have their own C T E program, whatever the hell they got going on, where they get money for that. E D C is for economic development, but they want to move the money from here to the school for some other crap they got going on. Look, we need the money over here, you can put that on streets, you can put that money on your water. Why are we giving money to the school district?
Head of H R approached me this morning, I got backlog, I got applications, twenty-two. Let's get on with it, Terry. Well, I'm trying, I'm going to be presenting tonight as city council. So I can say that for at least three years on my watch, the program has gone on, has been very successful and has brought our youth opportunities that they perhaps would not other have, otherwise have. I won't speak to the other six because I wasn't here.
Okay, so but what I'm, I'm gathering is that according to the information that's been given here, we've done it wrong for nine years, according to the information.
Apparently.
Okay, so we've done it wrong for nine years, okay? Next thing is, if, even if we've done it wrong.
So now instead of they've been doing this for nine years or since seventy-four, how Frank was saying it, they been doing it wrong, so now the motherfucker that goddamn admitted that this is a lie. This is a completely new program they got going on, they want to start, this is new. So they just lied to you and told you, it is, they lied to you. Frank then ante up on the lie, now Barti telling you where they been doing it wrong and this is something new. Let, let's go finish with these damn clowns talking about.
Has this program not enhanced, uh, the opportunities for socio-economically, uh, underprivileged students who are in Port Arthur? We have a school district that has, uh, uh, I don't know, I'm just doing a guesstimation now, but almost eighty percent of the students are, uh, are considered to be underprivileged, I know when I taught.
Dude, the school district handlers don't have money for the school district. The, the city needs to worry about city business, that's why your tax rates have increased on the water.
Everybody else gets free lunch, school, you know, because I was socio-economic, uh, uh, scale or factor, whatever it is. Y'all want a school board, right, yeah.
No shit, don't a school board, that's why you here with this dumbass crap, right? Now you want to run the city down worse than it's ran down already, to go over here to give some money, to throw money at them. Goddamn, hey, wha- what happens when the school ban, look, this school voucher, all this stuff has nothing to do with the city. And man, why you let these people do this to you, people? Like I said before, man, this thug ass goddamn clown of a mayor, Barti, Warlock Frank, Ken Lo Scary Cowardly Ass, right? They should be harassed every time you see these lying ass negroes. They should be harassed, now, the E D C guy, right, this motherfucker don't even live here. From what I'm hearing, he still living near London somewhere. They, they get all these sellouts, these out of town folk to come over here and rob the city of money. Stir this city in a negative goddamn way, right? But then you have, like I done said before, you've heard on a previous podcast, hell, Wayne Dosofino said it, these, these goddamn sellout ass law enforcers are in with it too, in my opinion, right? Because they not doing the doggone thing about it. They up there acting like they Democrats, smiling in your face, black folk, you know, hey, hi, hey, get me, I'm a Democrat. But when these underprivileged, these poor cities, underprivileged cities like Port Arthur with a high poverty rate get screwed over, right? We not representing the law enforcement, there's nobody here protecting us, right? You have the law enforcement all crooked, as I showed you, right? The, the civil service is trash, we got pay to play going on in the doggone, um, the, the, the fire department with a, with a doggone chief don't want to do anything about it. It's bad out here, people, I hate to put it to you, but we need to do something to oust these individuals, right? Look, the power is with the people, but you got to understand, people, I can't do it all by myself. Now I'm trying to give you the information, the doggone show you who's lying, what's lying and how we're not be, how we're not being represented legally or municipally, right? Through civil politics, so, man, look, I need you out here to help me fight these goddamn thugs, right? Call them out, it should be a hostile environment every time these lowlifes, you see them lowlifes out there in church, I don't see why that this whole church shouldn't get tossed the fu- tossed the hell over, right? I don't see why the pew pit should be getting kicked down, the chairs should be getting tore up off the frame of the ground over there. I don't see why, these people are just straight lying to you, they don't give a damn about you.
So, uh, it's, it's basically low, okay? Uh, so, so we've had, we've, we've got that, so this is what I need to know. Where does the money come from, because this is a program we have to do? Now, if we can't get the money from, for those nine years, if I, if I'm recalling correctly, it's city manager.
What you mean where you get the money from, Barti? If you've been doing this for nine years or like Frank said, you've been doing this for since nineteen seventy-four or what the hell ever he said, what, forty, fifty years or whatever? Why you don't know where the money coming from, people, this is a straight lie, they lying to you, man. You as citizens need to have more respect for yourself and let these sellout house nigga, lowdown, dirty, um, handkerchief haired negroes screw you over like this.
Every year, we've had something to come before this council to approve these programs, every other year, something. I, I can recall these six years, this is not the first time we've had a resolution like this for some, for some employment. It's not, is it? Okay, that's something, every year, something comes, something happens. Now, out of all these years, and Mr. Doocy, with all due respect, out of all these years you've been up here, you just not thinking that we doing it wrong. That's the truth.
That's, 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 you got this stupid son of a bitch Barti. Barti trying to use a, trying to play a mind game on Doocy, man, this shit don't make no fucking sense. This is goddamn circus, Barti trying to, this, this shit so stupid it's funny. This shit is so stupid it's funny. Barti just do, been doing it, look, they, 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 they do so much lying. They trying to confuse Mr. Doocy about this old shit, they trying to say he, this shit stupid, man. I'm about to go over, I, I, I can't do this shit with these damn clowns all the time.
Right down to that. What I'm saying and what I would like to say to this council, you know, we were having the, the attorney in this, I don't know, can we keep the meeting going when the attorney excuses herself, city secretary? Yeah, and I don't see anybody else from our staff in here. Now, hold up, we, we, I mean, if, if for time, for time purposes, I want to keep going.
Now, now you got this, now, now I done goddamn lit her motherfucking ass up right on the goddamn grievance, on the ethics violation for being incompetent. Now this motherfucker want to goddamn leave, from what I'm hearing, right? I don't know, I, this is my first time seeing it, look like the city's, the city attorney trying to goddamn leave. She hearing all these motherfucking stupid ass negroes lying, now her D E I, she trying, look like she trying to leave, I don't know. I'm just, it's my first time, I'm just checking it out right now. So it look like, so it look like she trying to leave, she don't want to be the accomplice to this stupid ass shit over here. We, we, we about to see what the hell going on.
I just don't want it to say, I said it and then, because, yeah, because what I'm getting ready to ask is a legal question. And so, I don't mind, I mean, I understand.
See, that's what it looking like, you want to get, we just thought I get the legal question, that's, that's clown ass city attorney want to get her ass smoothed the hell up out of here.
We, we been here all day.
But she goddamn right, you go ahead and leave if you want to, because I goddamn tell you, from now on, every motherfucking shit yoked D E I incompetent ass, goddamn co-sign this shit, I'm sending that shit up. Every motherfucking thing I see, this dumbass city attorney, you co-signing these dumbass niggas. You want to come down here and, and, and listen to these dumbass niggas, you go ahead, you will be looking stupid just like them.
So, so, but this, this, this is, but this is the point, I could do like, uh, what's the, what's the senator's name of that? Yeah, I could talk twenty-five hours, okay? All right, I say he comes back, uh, 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 I was going to say his name, but, uh, what we have is, we have an opportunity to again, because I, I listened to Mr. Doocy as he described what was written in the law that he was using to, to support his position now. When he described whom could be assisted, it never stipulated an age requirement. The only characteristic that it had in its requirements for the individual was that the individual would be unemployed. I don't know how many, now, if you employ a student who already has a job at McDonald's, but they trying to get him a second job, which I don't mind that, because I had two or three jobs, I got fifteen now, okay? But if that happens, then maybe, you know, we, we may be in violation because we got a kid who works at McDonald's and who's come gotten this other job, you see what I'm saying? You know, maybe, that's, that's a technicality, but from what I can understand now, and, and as we would interpret the validity of if we are doing it correctly, that they had to be unemployed. Because of their unemployment, their employment during the summer or with the monies used under this program, those monies would actually deliver to those kids skills that would enhance their employability or the probability of them being employed, which actually means that you're going to teach them something during those six, eight weeks that you're going to have them there, that would make them.
The school handles its own teaching issues. The city has nothing to do with, nor we should be giving money to them. We don't have anything to do with that, right? And once we give them, look, you don't, we don't even have oversight of the money here. So we giving them, we'll definitely not have oversight of the money, no. So, once the money is gone, yeah, they can do it if they want the money. They, they do what they want with the money here, you know what I'm saying? So, that's just money wasted, all of this money is going to be money wasted, right? Now I was talking to some people and, uh, talking about, um, the school bond, right? If you remember correctly, they had another, they had a, a previous school bond, they said they want to do this with the, uh, I think it was the last one, with the high school, right? The high school bond, they said they wanted to put it at a certain location with the high school and then after they got the bond, they want, they changed, they changed where they wanted to do it. I think some people had to file a lawsuit, if I, if I remember correctly, Kenneth Marks, I'm not sure, but hell, you know, after they get the money, they go lie, right? Now, I, I know that's a whole different issue with the school bond, but, but the thing is, right? The school district lies too, all these motherfuckers, they from the school district, all of them lying. It's a different, it's a different issue when they get the money, just like the school bond, they don't want to tell you where it's at. They want to get the money first, right? They had a previous issue where they lied about the taxes on that bond with in twenty fourteen, then they came back and said, well, yeah, we got to raise it now. Lied to you about where they wanted to put the high school, they wanted to put it on property they already had, but the people had to sue to get that put at a different location, so it's a whole lot of stuff going on. So, it's a whole lot of stuff going on here, a lot of lies, a lot of crookedness, a lot of corruption going on, man. So, you know, understand, it's just money wasted. City giving your tax dollars to the school district, and you don't know where in the hell it's gonna go after that.
Active to an employer at some later time in their lives. So, I think we have complied with that part of the rule, now, I'm the.
Now, you saying that a la- later part sometime in their lives, right here is the money that they need to finance it, right? Well, that training may not be good for some later on part in their lives. Well, you have the E D C that does the training right now, but the time they wanna goddamn work, you see what I'm saying? All of this crap doesn't make any sense, man, that's why this council is so corrupt, these silly ass Negroes are so dumb, and the other motherfuckers that support them are just as dumb.
He said, make, make a difference with me, and he has that, you know, he has, he has that, that, that option. Now, attorney, what I'm asking is, where does the money come from? We need this program. If, if we can't get the money for this program, from where we've been getting it from, where can we get it from so we can have the program? We need the program, you know, everybody stands up and says, what needs to happen in Port Arthur? What has, okay, so we can just take this money from the taxpayers' money, from the general fund, and put ninety-six thousand dollars in this, so we could have the summer program?
What the hell is he talking about?
I didn't want to have a summer program if what Congressman Doucette, we, yeah, that's what I'm saying, can we, I mean, you gonna have a program, okay? If I gotta go collect some money on the corners.
See, see, what this fool trying to conflate is, right? They have the money in the summer employment program, right? This is like they hire five kids for three months, two or three months in the summer. That's all that is, right? What they wanting to do now is take money from the adult pre-employment issue, right? It's two different things. Youth summer program is not the pre-employment training that they have, right? So, Barti is trying to say all this stupid ass crap, confusing citizens, himself trying to confuse other council members, and what he wants to do, right? They're taking the money from the pre-employment training, like with the, the money the city used to give to Lamar State College, Port Arthur, to do the C D L training, or to do some other construction training, iron workers, welding. That's what the money is taken away from, the money has to come from somewhere. It's from the adult training stuff, right? The adult training, and they wanna give this to the school district, you don't know where it's gonna go. You don't know where it's gonna go. The school have their own issues with money, if they need, they have their own, they get money for that stuff, right? But the school district's so top-heavy over there with all this high-paid ass administration, that's where the money going. They have their own issues, you don't need to take municipal tax dollars and throw it at the school district when they already get some tax money.
I'm, I'm not above it.
That we've had every year.
Yeah, so, we, we gonna get the ninety-six grand, that's what it's gonna take, right?
We have.
And how many, you said you got twenty-two applications?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that ninety-six thousand dollars will take care of those twenty-two kids?
Yes, sir.
Okay, get twenty-three, I got a little cousin, I'm gonna send to you tomorrow.
Okay. Now, now, that right there, that's the ethics, that's a fucking violation right there. That man just said a violation on goddamn camera. He have a, he putting money to benefit his cousin. Oh, my God. This is how corrupt this city has to be. This man can goddamn violate some abuse of official capacity, some type of rule with that statement right there. It just don't get any better than this in the city of Port Arthur.
No, 'cause somebody gonna look at this and tell me that, okay, all right?
Yeah, I, I have one comment.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Let me speak, okay? First of all.
Oh, now, look how sassy Barti is, boy, sassy as an old sassy ass Negro, right? This old sassy Negro, got his back turned, Doucette, all that disrespectful ass shit, you know what I'm saying? That's a sassy ass drug dot Negro there, man. Small fee Barti, he gonna get money any way he can.
Well, if you read your background information, you wanna kind of make it seem like a thing. But I could tell from the discussion, you ain't been reading the background information, because what he's talking about and what you're talking about being going on, yes, that's a summer hire. Okay, that's a summer hire. If you look at what he's put in the background and requesting, this is a new program that he's talking about initiating. It's in the book, it's in the program.
You say, but he initiating something new, you say?
This, that's what I'm saying. If you read all of the background, if you read everything in it, this is not what they been doing, this is something you, that he wants to do now. What he's talking about, we been doing every summer, that's a summer hire. That's a program that's been in existence, okay? That's been established. What you're talking about in that, what I read is new. See, I'm not gonna stay here and go, because it's late, like you said, I'm gonna go back and try, and we always bring these things back, 'cause I'm getting tired of people coming with the bright ideas. This discussion that we having here, this is not the first time that Mr. Doucette's discussing with some members of council. But the fact of the matter is, this program that he's proposing now is something he's just starting, and it should have been, council should have been made aware of it. But what I heard from there, it's been, we've been doing it for nine years, and, well, if we've been doing it for nine years, you'd have had the funding already in there when you did your budget.
There you go.
I'm done with this, because like you all say, I'm gonna check it out, I'll bring this back, but when I bring it back, I'm gonna have the information to make sure you all understand, we ain't been doing it for no nine years, I'm done now.
Okay, we, 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 we on question on that?
Mayor, can I, can?
Go, go ahead, I mean, we still on question, that's what I'm trying to say, where we were.
So, I, I do, I do understand, I, I truly do understand what you're saying about it being a, a new, uh, type of, of, uh, updated type of program. This is the youth employment program, the background specifically states, "The youth employment program provides students with real-world learning experiences that extend beyond the classroom. It allows them to apply what they've learned academically in a."
What the fuck is you reading this shit, what the fuck is you reading this shit for? What in the fuck is your stupid ass reading this shit for?
...setting, fostering relationships between students, local businesses, and industry professionals. Open to Port Arthur residents graduating high school in twenty twenty-five or incoming seniors graduating in twenty twenty-six. The program aims to help participants enhance their skills and gain experience in a business environment related to their studies. This is what we're voting on today.
No, no, that ain't what we voting on, you clown ass fool. This dumb son of a bitch, they goddamn talking about, you voting on their summer youth program? When the fucking ordinance specifically says it's taking money out of the goddamn adult training program to go ahead and go to some motherfucking youth program shit at the school?
Okay, okay, uh, Councilman Lewis, that is on first time.
Even if that information wasn't correct, this is what we're voting on today.
Yeah, okay, okay, Councilman Lewis?
Yes, I just wanna encourage, I mean, get these self-help programs, like the Cedar Program, for example, where we get opportunity to, to help them youths get into these programs, uh, get into life skills and, and, and be productive. And they can later have some, have some marketable skills when they come out of high school, okay? I wanna give you an example of how a, 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 a program like this has helped somebody in the Cedar Program. This.
Now, unfortunately, Mr. Lewis is wrong about this, right? As a Cedar Program, something completely different, you taking money from adults, trying to give it to some kids.
Come in the Cedar Program for the city of Port Arthur, he did such a good job, they, when the program ended, they kept him. And he went on to other positions, and he went on to other position. And he, he ended up in the city manager's office, he became the city manager, Harvey Robertson. Came in, into, into the workforce with the program, these health program. So, there may be some gray areas sometime, but we just got to do the greater good.
Unfortunately, Mr. Lewis is probably one of the most optimistic council members out of here, but sometimes he forget, you dealing with these goddamn dummies on council, and, and they, and they not gonna do what they supposed to do with the money. Yeah, you, you thinking the right thing, Mr. Lewis, but unfortunately, this issue, you're wrong on that one.
Try to do the greater good, okay? Okay, okay, that's.
Greater good is keeping the money right where it's at, train these adults that know what they wanna do. When the school, they already have the Cedar Program, they already have their own stuff going on over there. They have, schools have that taken care of with the kids. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, Councilman Kenlaw?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I, I did read the background in this, uh, you know, but two things, if you look at the signature block, you see the attorney of the P A E D C, and then also the question was asked to our attorney, will we be able to do this based upon information that was provided by Councilman Doucette, which is, uh, five oh one one six three, and she stated saying yes. But what got me was, these are twenty-two students are residents of the city of Port Arthur. And it's, you know, if we can do it, why we, I mean, what's the thing that's holding it up?
Kenlaw, if you give this money to this homeschool church program bullcrap that Becker was talking about, you don't know where that money going to, she just told you to have other goddamn people giving them money, right? So, you don't know where the fuck that money going for? You give it to the school district, you don't know where that money going, going to.
It's a new program, why are we saying, or why the concern is being said that, uh, because being new, we should not approve, or something should be brought back to the council? My thing is, if it's gonna benefit students, residents, or, you know, it doesn't matter how we label these individuals.
You're taking money from one spot, right? From the pre-employment deal with the adults, you're taking the money from the adults. That's what you're doing, clowns, you're taking the money from people that need to work, I know I need to work right now, and trying to give that to a youth program where the kids don't even know what the fuck they wanna do when they get out. You may train them for pipe, they feel, man, I don't wanna do that bullcrap. Well, hell, they ain't hiring right now, I wanna do something else. Well, hell, they may wanna leave the goddamn city, you know what I'm saying? So, doesn't make any sense.
Giving them a edge and a benefit to be successful coming out of the city of Port Arthur.
You said the word edge.
So, tell me, I'm missing.
These motherfuckers, these are clowns, this is like a circus performance right now. You got Kenlaw saying some dumb shit, Barti saying more dumb shit, he co-signing the dumb shit from Kenlaw saying.
Missing something, even if it's new, why wouldn't we support residents of the city of Port Arthur at twenty, what did I read, twenty dollars?
Twenty-two or something.
Twenty-something.
You're taking money from the adults that need a job right now.
Eighteen to twenty-eight dollars an hour to give them an edge and, and, and teach them, or give them the opportunity to be successful? I mean, what's the, you know, we spending thirty-eight minutes on this trying to decide on if we wanna support residents of Port Arthur, first it was youth, now.
No, 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 they, they wanna make it seem like that Doucette don't wanna do anything for the kids, but you gotta understand, you taking money from the adults that know where they wanna work. The adult, they know where they wanna work right now. And you talking about some kids thinking about it, most of you are, I'm pretty sure about eighty-five to ninety percent of the people are, is not working at where you thought you was gonna be working when you was sixteen or seventeen years old, right? I can pretty much guarantee you, most of you out there listening to this is not working the same job that you was at, that you thought you was gonna be at at sixteen or seventeen.
Discovered that it's residents, or somebody from the city, or somebody at the age of eighteen, or a senior, or possibly gonna be a junior, uh, senior next year. So, tell me, I'm missing, am I missing something? I mean, can you answer that question for me?
Kenlaw, what you're missing is you're taking money from the adults, the people that want to work, the people that's training over in Lamar State College, Port Arthur, right now for C D Ls and other crafts. You taking money out of that, and you wanna give that to some, the school district, youth program, whatever the hell you trying to slide that money out under, right? That's not, that you taking away from the adults that know what they wanna do right now, that's gonna affect the actual, um, unemployment rate. That's what you're doing. Adults that need the training right now, that's where you get the kids here. They may be talking about going to college later on, so they may not be ready to work right now. When they get to college, they may learn other interests that they may wanna do. So, that money was just wasted.
Kenley, sir, no.
And that, and that bullcrap program you talking about is not no complete career path where you, where it's like a job thing from the cradle to the grave. You just throwing money at some training where the, where the student is not gonna actually be migrated from the training to an actual job. You're just giving open training, and then the kid, they have to go try to do, uh, uh, the interview and all this stuff, or they may be, you need, there's a whole lot of other things that the kids need to learn and a need to master, and, and, and that is not gonna get a career job right out at eighteen. It, it's, it, it doesn't make any sense.
Uh, the youth employment program is the youth employment program. Certainly, you would expect that we would continue to review, refine, update, and make sure the program is valid and current for twenty twenty-five and what our children have to be faced with for the coming years. And that's all we've done. Uh, I'll take the hit, the buck stops with me. If somehow or another, I have led you all to believe that this is something quote-unquote "brand new", that was not our intention. Our intention was to convey that we are making sure the program is up to snuff and beneficial for the long term of our students. It is, but in terms of its umbrella, its intent, its reach, that hasn't changed. I've gotten some good advice from, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, and we're gonna make sure that we, uh, make sure we have an outreach. But beyond that, it's the same as what you've done, at least in the time that I've been here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we ready to fold, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, the sound of the eyes have it, and so, uh, B R number twenty-four two-two-nine.
Before you go on, uh, I don't, uh, this person probably needs no introduction at this point, but I do want everyone to see, put a face with the name. This is our workforce and community development manager, Mr. Sean Granger. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to have you all see him face to face.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, he, 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 he's all over the track, okay?
Yeah, right, let, let me go ahead and kind of bring you kind of what, what this, what's got to contain, right? Let, let's look at this right here. Resolution authorized Port Arthur Economic Development Corps utilizing pre-employment workforce training funds to implement a youth employment program, right, in the amount of ninety-six K. Don't know if they're going to the school district, or they got some other kind of new, there's just so many lies right here, right? It could be going to the, the school district, they could be going to the same. These, these mothers lie so goddamn much, it's, it's no telling, right? They have, it could be going to the school district where they doing something over there, because they all from the school district, that's, that's where it could be going. You have some type of youth program, we had, the, the, the current thing we have going on right now, right? Is where these about five kids get hired for the summer for about three months, right? I don't know why in the hell you wanna put more money into that, you wanna take it from the, the pre-employment workforce training, right? All this is stupid, you never telling what these lying dogs are talking about, right? Let's go over the goddamn deep sea, you know, I love the A I, right? You know, I love the A I, I love the technology, right? Has there been any discrimination issues where local government wanting to take money out of job training for adults and put it into kid program? Okay, let's go ahead and do, blah, blah, blah. They got some type of thing, or some type of framework, okay, example case study, okay, Detroit, Michigan, okay? Let's go try that, oh, okay, that's one I seen, and some other key stuff, conclusion. While reallocating funded general policy decision, it is, it risks discrimination claims with disproportionate harm to protected groups. Legal challenges are rare but possible depending on the ten impact, blah, blah, blah. Okay, tell me more about the case study with Detroit, Michigan, right? Okay, let's go over here. Case involved in Detroit, Michigan highlights tensions between funding adult job training programs and youth initiatives, particularly during the city's fiscal crisis following the twenty eighteen, two, two thousand eight recession and its eventual bankrupt. particularly during the city's fiscal crisis following the twenty-eighteen, tw- two thousand eight recession, and its eventual bankruptcy in twenty-thirteen. Here's a detailed breakdown situation. Background, Detroit's fiscal crisis, right? Economic collapse, Detroit economics already struggling, de- and then, yeah, de-industrialization and population decline. Two thousand eight recession exacerbated unemployment, budget cuts to address this, uh, eighteen to twenty billion, uh, debt. City made several cuts to public services, including workforce development programs, federal funds, workforce innovation, opportunity, blah, blah, where critical job training, but priorities shifted towards youth programs amid pressure to address generational poverty and crime, okay? Policies of redirecting funds to youth programs. In the mid-two thousand ten, Detroit government and workforce agencies proposed realcali- reallocating resources from adult-focused job training to youth employment and education initiatives. Key examples includes mayor's time, mayor's time program, right? Summer jobs initiative, just like we're saying over here, right? For teens and men at reducing youth unemployment, which exceeded fourteen percent and deterrent crime. Okay, same thing right here, it's damn near the exact same thing, or very similar. Grow Detroit's youth talent, okay? Launched in twenty-fourteen, public-private partnership, okay? Got a PPP, right? Uh, be down with PPP, yeah, you know me, right? Uh, provided thousands of teens with summer jobs and mentorships funded partially by proposed reported federal and local workforce dollars. School-based priorities, post-bankrupt city prioritized K through twelve, uh, education reforms, literacy programs to address systemic underperformance, blah, blah, blah. Okay, so you got money going to either the, 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 the summer program, the same thing like we got, or it's going to the school district. Wherever they trying to send some money in the youth program, wherever they trying to do, right? Everybody confused about this shit, right? So wherever they trying to send the money to, if it's going to the school for the youth, because they was on the doggone school board, or if it's going to here for a summer program, hey, look, all of this covered now, and, and example I'm using. The impact on adult job training. Closure of adult programs, right? We talking about EDC money, but this is talking about fairly funded adult training centers, right? Those operated by Detroit Employment Solutions, blah, blah, face reduction in staff closures. Programs like manufacturing certifications, IT training, GED preparation, uh, preparation were scaled back. Disproportionate harm, adult job seekers, many of them who are low-income, African-American, older workers displaced by auto manufacturing job, lost access to critical retraining opportunities, right? That's what we're talking about right here. Unemployment among Detroit's black adults remains stubbornly high, over twenty-five percent in some neighborhoods. Federal funding rules, right? Critics argued that redirecting of this meant for adults and youth programs risk violating grant guidelines, right? Now, that, just like they read the law, right? They could, yeah, you could end up violating that, right? However, city cited flexibility and local area priorities under things. So from right here, it's like it was a policy issue, right? So just like I read a little bit above that. So same issues here, they claim this is a policy issue, what they want to do or not. All of this is pretty much similar, similar, right? Outcome compromises, partial restoration of funds, legacy unenvelopment, adult programs never fully recovered, contributing to persistent underemployment in Detroit by twenty-twenty. Tared post-secondary credentials compared to forty-one nation, man. Balance and progress, the debate continues today with programs like Detroit at Work, launched in twenty-seventeen, attempting to bridge the gaps by offering hybrid youth adult workforces, right? You need to get the adults working, man. Key takeaway, trade-offs. Budget cries often force painful choice between demographics. Detroit's focus on youth reflect a brief, a belief in breaking cycles of poverty, but critics call it short-sighted. Systemic inequity cuts to adult programs, deepening racial and economic disparities, highlighting how race and class intersect with age policy, with age and policy impacts. Advocacy matters. Grassroots pressure led to compromise showing importance of organized pushback and resource buy. So, man, look, basically, all of this comes down to, right? When you take, when, when you a kid, right? When you an adult, you don't know what you want to do, you don't have the training, the, uh, hell, your brains are not even fully developed at eighteen, right? Your brain is fully developed around twenty-five years old, so you may have different types of attitudes, right? I know, shoot, when I was getting out the military, I thought I was gonna have all this, you know, money coming back to the city and all these jobs. Hey, it didn't turn out like that, right? So when you in the kid, you have all of these dreams, but then you get a crash course of reality, it's not really like how they say, like, like how you think it is. The American dream is necessarily not that mu- not that quickly attainable, or is easily attainable, I should say. You still need to do more adult development, and you have a doggone, you have to have like a foundational work, right? Most of the times, you have to have a foundation of work, where you go and work at fast food, where you go and work at a retail, to get customer experience and customer training, all of that, it builds up into these so-called higher jobs and stuff like that. Unless you have family members that work in the field, right? That should have family member, friends, or not real close, that's gonna pull you in. But most of the time, and even if you have them pull you in, you know, you young, you not thinking about this, where I'm gonna, I'm gonna be sitting out here in this heat for the rest of my life, right? For the next twenty or thirty years, right? But then again, you have to go out there as a young adult, figure out what you want to do, and understand, hey, you know, life is not really how I'm thinking it. I'm thinking everybody ready to hire me, because they know how good of a person I am, right? But everybody don't know how good of a person you are, right? Then hell, you may want to travel, so having this, this particular training more so than what they have, right? They already have that in the school. But you, we trying to do, put, put some other money to either the school district where they have the money, or if this money is going to our own little summer program, hell, that's just for doggone three months. A summer program for three months, we're gonna take some job training money, where people can make full goddamn salaries and what they doing like CDLs and stuff, going to a summer program. Now, I goddamn tell you, right? As a kid, you not gonna want to be a CDL driver off the top unless your parents worked at, and they told you how good of a money they made, or unless you know somebody working at a CDL job that can kind of, that kind of do a cradle to the grave, bring you from the school over to the job, right? And kind of mentor, train you. This program, this, this summer school crap that they trying to do, or whatever they got going to the school, it doesn't lack the full components to be successful, because for a certain type of youth training program, you need a cradle-to-the-grave approach, right? You need a cradle-to-the-grave approach. Now, for the people that does, that's not in the, in refinery and stuff, they don't really work there, or somebody just don't know what I'm talking about, right? You need something that helps the student from beginning to the training to go on to the life skills of an interview process, right? That's gonna kill most of the kids, right? You have to go from the training of the job to the interview process of the job, right? To the actual mechanical aptitude tests of the doggone refinery job, or whatever you trying to do, right? So you need to merge all of those things in the training. And that this bullcrap that they talking about, a summer school program where you work for three months is not gonna do it. It's not gonna cut it. The money is where best spent where it's at. For the adult training programs, man, for the people like this adult that understands, they want to know, they understand what this world entails. They understand it's hard out here for a pimp, right? It's hard out here for a brother to get this job, so they understand this. So now that they have the mental capacity to get these jobs, and the mental maturity to get these jobs, that's where the money should be at, where it's currently at, so that the people can go get the jobs. And goddamn, hey, and make a doggone, make the best use out of it, and have a high success rate of getting hired versus you train somebody that's in sixteen or seventeen, where they don't know what the world look like, they don't know what the, they don't know anything about the world, right? So they don't know the pitfalls that they have to deal with trying to get these jobs. They don't have to go through the discrimination, all this stuff, right? And they don't know the tricks they're gonna try to do that, that, uh, Billy Bob have his, uh, son, his son and you for, you competing for this plant job or whatever, right? They don't know how to navigate those forces, right? So you need a bigger program than what these dummies on council is trying to give, so. That's it, man, please go ahead and share this, share this to somebody, let them know that I'm trying to give you this good gospel, right? Trying to give you this good information about the economics, right? And that's kind of like one of my pet peeves, is economics. And, and, and these motherfuckers trying to do all that, where you have this doggone wind farm, have some things in place where they want to give it to you, right? That's how, that's just how doggone, that's just how doggone stupid these fools are, and contradictory these people, all right? They got some, they trying to bring in some type of program, but you goddamn have a developer with this windstorm issue that has a program they wants to put in place, but you have these dumbass DEI attorneys, some of these dummies on council, that don't want to let it go through, man. Look, this is Super Dave, back at it again with the PA Politic Cal Revolution Podcast. Share it, like it, tell somebody about it. Until the next time, take it easy, peace.